This is the June fourteenth meeting of the planning board. We are all in person, so we do not need to go to a roll call vote. So with that, we will move to the seven o'clock item. The site plan review, public hearing for the Bank of America to increase the number of exterior lights. By more than ten percent at fifty-two Main Street. I don't know what else I need to say on the record, but.
Good evening, I'm Matt. I'm basically with Fuller Engineering. We're the civil engineers for the applicant who is Bank of America or CBI, their agent. We're here for for a minor lighting project for the bank, which actually Elizabeth can probably test has been around for a couple of years. This is a little background. The bank is doing lighting upgrades throughout their whole whole footprint. A lot of it has to do with upgrading LED high efficiency. Also, a lot of it, as you mentioned, with the bank is the security lighting. They have their own security lighting standards, which are based on the engineering illuminated. The engine, the illumination engineering society, which is generally three foot candles around ATMs, things like that. So that's what they try to aim for, as you can imagine, that. Not really applicable with, you know, a downtown historic district or something, something along those lines. So I think even a couple of years ago, they come into the. To the time of historic district commission with a pretty thorough lighting plan and we're lately told. Come on, what are you guys doing? So after some back and forth, we did come back with a. A couple of different revised lighting plans, but with the HTC for a much, much more reduced lighting program, they. Not, not there to their standards, but whatever lighting they could provide by a little extra security and safety, they like to provide as long as it's responsible and inapprovable. So I assure you all are very familiar with this, right?
I can, I can bring it up.
Oh, sure.
So, so this is the bank main street and their little access aisle between that and the next door with an ATM here. And then there's kind of walkways along along the back here. So the areas that they. They typically focus on are along main entrances or or ETMs. So some of these areas up front here typically would be areas they looked at. They're just so close to the property lines. It was hard to meet zoning or really. Really add lighting in those areas. So the areas we identified were were back here. So there's three lights they're proposing there. Twelve by four, very small kind of utilitarian lights. We did get a recommendation from the HTC as to kind of what kind of fixture they they wanted. And that's, that's what we had sell that there are. About seventeen hundred lumens or maybe just slightly more than a hundred watt light bulb in in design, so that they don't do any letting across the property lines, which is. This darker line around here. So there's one here over the main entrance to the ATM, which kind of lights the stairway and ramp. One here on this back facade wall, the accessible ramp that comes down here. And one in this little looking cranny goes and heard see access zone here, seen the area here, and then in the top of the ramp over there. So again, maybe. About a foot candle right directly under underneath the light and then no lighting at the proper lines around around the back here. They're all. Dark sky compliant and a color temperature around three thousand K, so kind of a softer color temperature, not the break through that might blind you on the highway. As you're driving along. Also, I didn't mention in my cover letter and Elizabeth mentioned, I was kind of one of our best selling points. I think it just kind of lost in shoplifts. They are proposing the removal of. Three down floodlights that are on the building. So there's one on this front door here that faces this way, one. Right here facing down this way, and I believe one on this wall here. So those three are going away and being replaced with with these lights here. So we had the HTC approval for the fixtures. Another comment that did come out of Elizabeth memo is the the tree they call for some trimming of trees. The plan is a little. A little outdated in that they, I think they started this in twenty twenty-one when they had the the less desirable lighting plan. And I I was just out there. The trees are pretty. Pretty trimmed back, so they do like to trim the trees a little bit, but I don't want the the notes was to remove trees along here. And I think we thought that probably if. If the town went like that, I think they're remountable for that, for moving that that work from the project. That, that I hope that was clear, but happy to answer your questions or get into more detail.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board if anyone has any particular questions about.
Can you speak up just a little?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll open it up to the board if anyone has any particular questions regarding the lighting plan or or what was presented. I can.
That question. So you said that some lights are going to be removed, some lights are going to be brought in. The overall, and I don't know even how to describe this in terms of light.
Yeah.
Does the light go up or down? The amount of light that's on that property?
Yeah, I guess, like, I would measure like.
The net.
The net.
The net movements. Yeah, so three are getting removed, three are getting replaced, to be honest. Those floodlights are pretty old, archaic. I think it would be hard for us to know exactly how many. How many lumens they were throwing. So my guess would be maybe slightly more at the ramp and the stairs in the back and then slightly less where those floodlights are, but. The lights they're proposing are, like I said, about a hundred watt light bulbs and are very, very good pictures.
Do you have any idea? What the utilization of that ATM in the back of the building is at nighttime? I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah, to be honest, I don't know. I'm trying to make me a little provide, provide data.
No, I just wondered if it, it's kind of tucked around there. It just seemed to me. Probably didn't.
Yeah, no.
Of use anyway.
In general, I find people probably make online, at least in my head, but I know banks do say they get a lot of use, so.
I think it's the closest to accessible parking. So, so you have a ramp and you have accessible parking back there where you don't have designated, you have drive-through.
As well. So it's like, why?
Yeah.
Cause I I walked around last night and someone did use the drive-through, but.
Well, if you're handicapped in some way where you can walk up and use an ATM, but you can't. Maneuver yourself to use a drive-through, it would be a very specific disability.
But it's not.
It's also not our.
It's also not just in June.
No.
You know, it gets dark at four.
Yeah.
When it's time.
Yeah.
And the bank is still open.
Yeah. Elizabeth had raised the question of the, there's an exterior door in that back far corner that's on the property line that. And there was some confusion as to is that an emergency egress? It's not an entrance. It's not.
It's not like a public interest.
No.
Emergency.
It's emergency egress. Okay. And that's why you want to light it. It's not currently lit.
Correct, yeah.
I had a couple of questions. So one thing is I see that the. XSP series lights you're proposing are in fact three hundred, three thousand Kelvins, but the LRX series lights you're proposing are. Four thousand Kelvins, and you just said that they would not be too blue. So shouldn't these also be three thousand Kelvin?
Those are, those are lights inside the the can, the the ATM vestibule stuff. Those are interior lights inside the building, not not exterior to the building.
So people need blue light to tell if it's a twenty dollar bill or a ten dollar bill? I mean, light does spill. It, the fixtures, I assume, will be possessed. They look possessed, and so they won't spill out, but like bounces around. I'm just not seeing a reason. For four thousand Kelvin light. At all.
I mean, the picture, that's the reason I pause is I want to see if the picture did come in three thousand K, and it does, I can certainly pass along their recommendation. I think. The blue light is a little bit more clear to read things, but if it was a sticking point, I don't think for the strike reference that.
Yeah, I presume, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I presume that those are the bank's standards.
So the lighting?
Yes.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And so I was looking at the materials that we got before this meeting. There was one form metric chart showing. The proposed lighting and what the lighting levels will be in all areas of the site, but there was another one that was labeled. Current and proposed conditions, and I wasn't sure if the lighting chart was supposed to mean. What the lighting is currently on the site or what it will be later.
Sure, yeah.
On the site.
There were, there were two exhibits. The one with the existing lighting surveys, that was, they went out with the a meter and measured like throughout the site. The existing and proposed one was basically a combination of. What exists there today, plus in addition to anything proposed. So we just, that was actually requested by the HTC that we provide like a full, what's the proposed lighting anticipated to be throughout the site?
Okay, then I'm confused because I went out to the site after dark and I saw that the current floodlights are sending light. All over the place. They're spilling onto the surrounding greenery, different properties, the. Wetland and stream behind the property, but that is or is that is not reflected in the exhibit you gave us?
The full things are being removed as far as the combined existing and proposed lighting exhibit. I would say our exhibit is conservative in that it might reflect slightly more light than was going to be proposed because it's hard for us to. Take an existing survey and remove a specific light from it. So I would say we, if anything, we overestimated what the proposed lighting is going to be out there.
Okay, but the, so in the exhibit, it was only showing the proposed lighting. It was not showing the current lighting?
It was showing a combination of both.
How do you?
Accounting for the removal of the floods?
Not accounting for the removal of floods because it's hard for us to to remove those.
But it was showing lots of zeros at the boundaries of the site, whereas they're actually quite lit up. So what do you mean by combination? I'm just not understanding.
I, I will, I'll bring it up.
Excellent. Thank you.
And one thing I'll know about the floodlights is the reason floodlights are undesirable is because there's a glare factor. They're not cut off. They're not down.
Oh, yes, they're clearly awful.
So they could take out.
You're taking them out.
Yeah, so you could take it around. You might get zero or point one foot candles, but if you look at it, it hits you directly in the in the eyes because it's not directed properly.
And there's feeling like, yes, like mad. Okay.
So let me like blow it up toward the back of the site, I guess. So this is the existing, and so right here, there's that one floodlight on this side.
Uh, no, so I get, I get the plan. So that's the proposed lighting plan.
This is the proposed lighting plan?
Yeah, there's a proposal. There's a proposed and existing.
There's that one light that.
The base consulting had gone out and done a survey of length. Basically, they took the meter, they walked around, they took points at each each location of what they had for light. The HTC had asked us, well, what's it going to look like the combined case? So what we did is we took. That lighting plan and we incorporated anything that was proposed lighting plan from the, from the new lighting, just so we could kind of like kind of a combined.
Okay, so the combined, combined one, the green ones are the proposed and the red ones are the existing?
The green ones are the combined existing proposed. So these are areas where lighting is proposed to change.
And so all that stuff back there, that's the existing conditions?
This back here, correct.
Okay, but it's all zero point zero all over the place, and yet when I went out there, there's light spilling. Up, oh, if they measured at the ground.
They measured at the ground.
Then the light would have been blocked by the shrubbery, but that hardly seems fair.
They're, they're supposed to measure it like. One or two feet off the ground.
Okay, but if they have to shove the meter under a shrub. Then they're not capturing the fact that the exist, well, the existing floods are going away. I guess what I'm trying to say is it's very hard for me to. I'm finding it hard to believe that these numbers are accurate, given how much light is clearly visible, spilling, you know, onto the canopy of. The table, picnic tables, the trees all along here, all through this parking area. How can it, even in the parking area, how can it possibly be zero point zero? When there's lots of light spilling and.
Yeah, I tend to agree, to be honest, because I know if I were out there and looking, the floodlight is going to hit you in the eyes, so.
So I have, I have. So all those plants, there's, there's one plan that was submitted. Where on the back side of the building where that door is, it says the the lumens are going to be twelve point four.
Yes, that's just like if you were standing directly, the light was right here and you measured it right here. So I guess within two feet of that location, it's it's one foot candle.
Should we do a site visit?
I don't think it would be helpful because.
Yeah.
Unle, unless they're, unless they can turn off the floodlights. Because they really skew. They really do skew.
Yeah, I can appreciate that.
Have you ever, have you, I mean, we've asked, so Mark, were you on the HTC when we considered this application initially? Okay, so I was when it came before, as for that. Have, has Bank of America ever produced nighttime renderings?
Like a rendering of the light?
A rendering of what the building looks like illuminated at night. It's one of those things where, as you said, it's hard to turn off floodlights. But we've certainly on other, not through the framework, through the HDP, on other projects, they've produced nighttime renderings. Where you've been able to see what the building looks like illuminated. It's really tricky to do.
Yeah.
But it's one of those questions where I, I agree, it's a little. It's a little confusing how the plan is presented, but if. I mean, if it's possible to. Turn off floodlights. So I guess my confusion is, is now I'm looking at this plan that's got the red and the green foot candles. And it says under that door, it's only going to be two point four.
Yeah, it depends where you take it. So this is this X right here. If you were standing, it's, it's just an unlucky spot of where they're taking the point. But if you were standing directly. Under this, this light, you would have obviously a lot of light shining directly down on you, but in very, very close proximity to it, you wouldn't.
I think Elizabeth asked me, what's the point of a two point four lumen fixture?
No, I, I.
That doesn't seem to add.
I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm just, we want you, twelve, twelve, twelve point four, right?
Oh, yeah.
You know. Yeah, and just to finish up the point I was making before, if the current numbers aren't accurate, then it's hard for me to understand what the new numbers will be with the new floodlights, given that. The numbers don't go all the way out into the parking area and up to the edge of the side.
Yeah, I don't think that would see that the current numbers are are inaccurate. I think they have a pretty sophisticated meter that they use to measure these things. I think it's more a matter of like. What's the light if you were staring at something directly in front of you or what do you see? Because if you were. On the highway and you see a headlight coming at you, you're going to certainly feel the impact of that, but perhaps you couldn't read a book that was in front of you.
You're seeing that when I see all this light on the trees and on the nearby cabin canopy, it's my eyes that are defective, not the numbers.
I'm seeing your eyes are defective. I'm saying it, it impacts your eyes because there's, there's a glare there. They're not properly oriented. They're, they're getting horizontally. They're not shining down or lighting the grounds.
Um, so this is, um, this is the problem I'm having. So I'm only talking about that one little corner. Where the, the door is. So this plan, this plan is showing at this spot twelve point three, nine point seven, then it goes out to four point nine, five point two. But if I look at.
Yeah, that plan doesn't.
If I look at. This plan.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're not the same.
Yeah, there's, there's two, there's two lighting measurements here. So the bank, this is the lighting at the ground level, so it's two point four. This lighting is, is what the bank does for compliance. It's the measurement at three point five feet off the ground, so. Closer to the light is going to be brighter. So these are the the light measurements at the ground at the bottom left of the plan here. If that makes sense. So it's a different elevation that you're measuring the light at. So the bank measures it at this elevation, but this is the literal luminance on the ground.
So do we? You provided two different charts with two different measurements, schemes. Is that what happened? Because it could explain why they don't seem to line up.
Yeah, the, the bank did. So this is the, the proposed horizontal luminance on the ground itself. This is a horizontal luminance measured three and a half feet off the ground, which is going to be brighter.
So can we get comparables at the ground and at three and a half for both proposed and existing?
Me, comparable.
Me, what I'm saying is that you, you have a one plant set of schematics that's at the ground and one set that's at three and a half. I'd like them both to be. So is this. So that you can actually compare apples to apples. Yeah, this plan, which is existing, is that measured at the ground?
That is measured. I believe so. I believe it measured at the ground. I have to double check. But I believe on the ground, correct.
Okay. And, and. And with the floodlights on.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Which of your exhibits demonstrates the cutoff area of the newly proposed floodlights? We're, we're cut off in the sense that the lights were assessed inside the fixture for dark sky purposes, so there will be some angle. Some distribution where one will not have a direct line of sight on the light emitting portion of the fixture. So. The line of. Where on the ground, you would no longer see the fixture would be the full cutoff area beyond there.
Yeah, sure. So our, our lighting exhibit shows that the area that'll be impacted by the light, and that's basically. This area in green right here, and because of zoning requirements, we had to keep that area inside of our property boundary.
Okay, so then the.
Sorry, is that a, I just saw unclear. Is that a ground level or is that a through C?
Is it that ground level?
Okay.
Okay, so then the lighting for the parking area will be provided by the two. Pole lights.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, and by the way, that, I, you're not proposing to change it and, but the bottom. Left pole light there is just a pole light. The LED is insanely bright, reflects on the glass walls of the light fixtures, so that you see. The pedestrian sees not only the LED and direct line of sight destroying their night vision, but also multiple reflections of the LED lights. Which then blast light all over the place. I, I, someday I hope the bank changes that, but I understand it won't be part of this proposal.
Yeah, I can make the suggestion that the problem with post top lights is they can't be dark sky compliant because the bulb is inside of it and shoots horizontally out, so.
Well, your front lights are amazing. Those cute little historical things. They're a great level of light, enough that you won't trip on the steps. But not blinding people's night vision. They're that wonderful, very low Kelvin color temperature.
I can make the suggestion.
That's the part I still don't understand.
I, I think, so I think the general sense is we, we seem to be a bit flummoxed by the light measurements.
I guess it's a concern that.
Various plans.
The floodlighting is a concern because those are being removed.
Well, no, the concern is, the concern, at least from my perspective, and sorry to talk over you, that. We're being told this is an adjustment and here are the little places, and then the, our experience of, hey, that pole there. Is super bright when you stand next to it, but it's reading zero point one. So there, there seems to be a discrepancy between what everyone's experienced and what.
The, the, the reading is. Out here. That's not right below it.
Right, but it's.
So, so the issue with proposed lighting, if we, if we're looking at the measurements and we say, oh, you've got a point one and a point two and a point is, oh, okay. That, that all seems very reasonable, but in practicality, we're looking at the lights and thinking, God, that seems really bright. And if we're adding together all of that. Are we over illuminating the site? Is, is obviously the. Yeah, is the base concern is, are we over illuminating the site? And I think it's this discrepancy of ground measurement versus kind of. You know, kind of waist high measurement or whatever you want to call it, but. I think we seem to be generally a little bit perplexed by the variety of readings versus the in-person experience.
Seems more the existing condition.
Yeah, and so if we can reconcile them somehow, it might help us in understanding what the overall illumination of the site is going. This increase of over ten percent is going to feel like. If that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, it's in general, I think you were saying, yeah.
So is that something you can do for us?
It, it is. I'd have to talk to the bank because I mean, they are, they did have a light specialist come out and take and take these measurements. So I guess, like, I can't really say. Guys are lying or you're wrong because I know they're very careful about about what they do and they have, when we have a lighting unit, I can take measurements.
I think what would be helpful is. Is they don't need to go back out to redo the proposed lighting at three and a half feet. So that it matches. The, the compliance plan. That, that is, that's a more, you know, reasonable, you know, judge of how bright something is because. Right now, you know, I mean, they're. So the existing is showing. See, this is, I guess this is where I'm, I'm having, it's either. They just, they just need to be the same. Yeah, we need to be able to compare them. Whatever the, whatever the, whatever, however you're measuring it.
Yeah.
Needs to be consistent from existing to proposed.
And we do have that, that's, that's this plan here at the bottom left. If you just ignore this, this plan at the top left, this is the proposed at the same, at the same measurements.
It, it's generally, it's my understanding, you, you don't take a measurement of light at the ground. So I would just be curious to see what the proposed lighting is. At three, at three and a half feet.
Or the existing line at three and a half feet, I guess.
Well, I think, isn't that, isn't that?
We have proposed as three and a half feet. We don't have existing at three and a half feet.
Yeah, that's what I would be wondering. So I don't know if they have to go back out to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we have a lighting meter in the office. I can take lighting measure, you know, measures. I guess it's also seems like it's a little bit of a, just an optical thing. So I just, we'd want you to be comfortable. That the lights we're proposing are very, very minimal, maybe particularly compared to the, to the existing ones, because it sounds like those are a little objectionable.
I, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, you know, I think Abby's point is we want to make sure you're not over illuminating the sun because that. Would cause criticism of us in town. It's in a very important place in the center of town.
So for existence, we measured it. It was at ten, you'd be like, well, why do you need more light?
And make sure that it isn't spilling over into adjoining properties. I guess those would be my two concerns.
Right, and the Millbrook, but that is an adjoining property, yes.
And I also think at, at three and a half feet. You're going to get more credit than. You are currently for removing those floodlights. You know, if you're measuring it three and a half feet and you take the floodlights out. I think you're going to see a drop in the overall illumination, and that's going to be helpful, I think, to address concerns that it's over illuminated.
Would the, would the board be satisfied if, if we, Bowler went out, we have a lighting meter, took maybe not a hundred spots, but took maybe ten, ten spots to select locations at. Some areas, we noticed a lot of glare just to confirm the existing numbers, and then hopefully we find a somewhere thing, but if we find differently, we can, we can report it.
Yeah, that sounds like a, well, you know what we're trying to accomplish. Okay, so you should, you know, you figure out how to make that work.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Sorry, I don't mean to, you know.
I get it, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And I, I'm just a little unclear. You mentioned landscaping at the beginning. It seems like you're saying that there could be some changes made from your original proposal, but that means I don't actually know what you're proposing.
I think we proposed no changes to the landscaping.
Okay, all right, that's very clear then.
I think the board meets again in two weeks. Is that?
July second.
So it'll be remote, right?
Yes.
So that will, I'm just lucky enough to be away that week.
Then the sixteenth, is it?
Yeah, it's a hybrid meeting on the sixteenth.
Yeah. Yes.
I mean, you don't, I don't know where you're commuting from, but you could do it.
Yeah.
Virtual. That would be more convenient. There's no.
Oh, no, probably felt you guys were wrong in a few years, so.
Our discussion to be in person, but presenting, it's really funny. Don't think you. Anything, so if you want to continue this. Seven, I believe, but let me check.
Isn't there a new subdivision planned that night?
There is.
Sixty-one Walden Street or something.
I think fifty-one Bean Walden.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, that one's been scheduled for seven thirty, but you tentatively have on the schedule the MBT communities. Site time rules and regs discussing. That's at seven.
It's.
I mean, you can. Can we do this at seven?
Yeah, yeah, this is, is the consultant scheduled to be there, so it doesn't, I'm just gonna.
We so.
Okay.
So you could do that at seven and this is. Seven fifteen seventy, you know. Probably won't be up till like seven thirty or so, but.
Can we flip that and do him at seven? Because he, he won't be very long. I think the other one.
That's fine.
The other one could be lengthy.
Yes. I make a motion that we continue the application, site plan review hearing for Bank of America. To increase the number of exterior lights, which was by more than ten percent at fifty-two Main Street to seven fifteen P M.
Sure.
Seven P M on July sixteenth.
Awesome.
Second.
Is there a second? Close in favor? And, and your parties? No?
Awesome, thanks so much. We'll do that. Thank you.
Good luck.
So thank you, yeah.
So with that, we'll move on to the seven-ten agenda item. The recommendation of the ZDA regarding the Middlesex School for a special permanent site plan review under the zoning bylaws. Section six point two point eleven, eleven point six and eleven point eight for a new athletic practice facility with a height waiver to seventy-two feet, nine inches at fourteen hundred Lowell Road. I believe this is an initial presentation, so.
Great, well, thank you for having us. We have a good portion of our team here in person, so we'll start with introductions. And then I'll share my screen, so. We can also have the hybrid member team. So I'm Lonnie Ash. I'm the project manager and architect on the project with CBT Architects.
Hi, Stephen Vantescio with Niche Engineering.
Kurt LeCroy, I'm Middlesex Director of Projects and Safety.
Hi, Brian Summow, a school's construction consultant. And we go, we negotiate the contract, the general contract. Representing school.
Okay. So, quick agenda. I'll quickly, I'll start actually on the pretty pictures and then we'll jump into the detail. So here's the building. So it is a new built house on campus on the north side of campus. A few years ago, this school undertook. A few years ago, this school undertook a study to of their athletic facility to determine kind of what where the future was taking them. One of the main things that came out of that study was. A real need for practice facilities, because a lot of their practices, a lot of their kids weren't having a chance to really use the facilities. In some, a lot of that was going late into the night, cutting into the academic study time. So what they decided to do was build a field house that would expand on the practice facilities, it's about eighty thousand square meter program space. Um, this view here, if you're familiar with campuses, from the fields looking north to the right is the existing origin. Left is the faculty housing, which was just finished last summer, maybe summer before. And aesthetically, the building itself really fits into the campus, the kind of neo Georgian feel of of the campus. This is the view from north looking towards the the campus, in the background, you see the existing chapel. Um, this is where the day students will be dropped off, they're currently dropped off here, really, it's just a gravel lot. Um, and again, the aesthetic, the building itself is really meant to to blend in with the with the campus. On the inside, and we'll jump into the floor plans later in the presentation, but on the inside, there's a multi-purpose courts, including turf and basketball, there's also a second level track. And this is kind of a summary of some of the things that I've mentioned, but to highlight, so um, one of the things is the project is gonna be the first lead certified project on the campus, even though the. Past projects that we have done on campus have been built with the sustainability in mind and have been potentially lead certifiable. The campus has really taken the next step and making sure that this building is gonna be being certified. Um, I already mentioned the need for practice facilities, so this is really gonna be expanding what they'll be offering and having more kids participate in athletics within the building. Um, and. Really, it's it's added to the experience of the the day students and visitors on the athletic side that are coming in that north, and you're Pratt Lane. This is where it lives, as you are probably familiar with the campus on the north side, it's next to the houses that were just completed. And passing it over to Steve to go over the systems.
Yeah, sure, I'm gonna approach the screen. So the the proposed building is here in white, um, and the houses that were just constructed, what we call the acorn houses, um, are here on the right and Lowell Road is here on the left. Um, and then Pratt Lane is here on the top, and then we have the existing houses that are here, um, there's currently four. We will be demolishing this one here and expanding the parking lot, um, and at this point, we're also taking an opportunity to redo the utilities, because as they were constructed, um, over time. They kind of cut through our site here, and so we're taking the opportunity to formalize them and make them a little bit more coherent. Um, I'll start with the sewer, um, the school has its own wastewater treatment plant, so we're not increasing any um. Flows into the town system, um, what we're doing is we're picking up the the waste from these five buildings here. Um, putting them into an ejector pump and then pumping them over to a sewer manhole over here, the new building, same um process. That will flow to the bottom um of the structure, we pumped into um the sewer fields or sewer system and then flow by gravity to the wastewater treatment land. Water, we took the opportunity when the acorn houses were built to um do an eight inch water service into the campus. And so from here, we fed the acorn houses on this side, and now we're gonna take an opportunity to disconnect all of the water that cut through our, that's cutting through our site. Um, and reconnecting these three houses here with new water services and backflow preventers and meters, um, that'll provide just better flow for them and and. Um, more robust system. We're proposing a hydrant here, um, we're actually repurposing what is currently there now, um, there's an existing hydrant here and then an existing hydrant here on this side. Next is drainage, um, everyone's favorite, so we're looking to produce rates and volumes here. Um, for the town code, we've submitted to conservation, we're going to uh be on the agenda for July tenth, so we're looking forward to that discussion. Um, we have spoken with the town engineer, we understand there'll be a third party review for drainage, so we're just waiting for that to uh to take place. Um, but what we're proposing are um underground chambers here, here in this color, um, there's another one here. Um, this one is lined as we go further north on the site, groundwater is higher and the site cuts low, so we need to provide a line system, so. This is where the workhorse is, where we're getting our volume control in these two, um, they're concrete galleys. Um, capturing root runoff and any surface runoff on this side. As we go around the building to the north, we're proposing um porous pavement, which is here, here, and then these other tones, those again are aligned, but they're providing water quality. Um, and also rate attenuation, so all of the discharge is going to two existing pipes, which are these two um dash lines in blue and going out into the wetland. Um, so we're repurposing those, we're gonna clean those lines, if we need to reline them, we'll reline them. Um, and then pretty confident that the outlets in this point, uh, these two locations are silted over, so we're looking to clean those out, and we'll talk to conservation about that. No gas, all electric building, um, and so we're getting feeds off of Pratt Lane um through here and then into the building, um, while also. Uh, no, I think these, I think we're good here, no one else needs to be touched, that's the story, good. Um, those are the utilities and we can talk a little more later.
Okay, I'll give the quick landscape up updates, so our landscape architect is on the line to answer questions if we have them later, but I'm gonna give you the architect. Idea of the landscape plan, so there's some green things on everywhere. But between our building and the existing building, there is a courtyard that um is being designed, which has some seat walls. On the south side of that, there is um some landscape implantings going along the south side, aside facing the fields. We are creating a pathway which is connecting to the west side of the building where there is some parking. On that parking, we are rebuilding and recreating the parking for the the faculty housing to include E V chargers for those. House, which is replacing kind of the plugs that they have now. Going along the north side of the building. On that that strip of parking there, we have the. Majority or the the balance of our E V chargers, um, the plan is. Just to meet code, we have at least ten percent that are gonna be E V ready, and on day one, there's gonna be eight to ten spots that are hooked up, ready to go for E V charging until we want. The main parking, as you come in towards Pratt Lane, we do have our A D A parking spots, which is connected to the main courtyard with a crosswalk strapping. Um, and then. On the north side, a new thing, since the last time we presented, there is um a generator, which is gonna have plantings kind of shielding it, but a backup generator. I won't spend too much time on this, we are meeting with the fire department next Monday, we had a preliminary meeting with them. The company, yesterday, yes, preliminary meeting with them yesterday.
It's on yesterday.
That is fine, so that's happening to talk about fire department access, emergency access, but the gist is from the south, we are providing reinforced turf. So why, to provide the twenty foot minimum, twenty foot minimum width. For a fire truck to drive in on the south, as well as turn around and leave, and then from the north, we have provided um at least. Enough space for the fire trucks to pull in there, a hundred twenty-five foot minimum, and then the dash line is just showing that there is enough distance for the hose um to meet the minimums for that. Okay, temporary parking, Steve?
Uh, temporary parking, so um as part of this process, um, as you know, where the building is going, uh, will go. There's a gravel lot there, and what we need to do during the construction phase is to park people elsewhere on campus, and so what we're proposing is to. Take the current um event overflow space, remove the top soil from there, um, that top soil will be transported offsite and stored for the duration. Um, we'll compact that, we'll put filter fabric and we'll, we will place a gravel parking area essentially for. Um, eighteen months or so to uh hold up to seventy, between seventy and seventy-five cars. Um, we're not proposing accessible parking here because that's accommodated elsewhere in the site. Um, so those uh people that uh require accessible spaces will have it and it is accommodated for uh on the site. Once the project is done, the gravel will be removed, the soil that had been stored offsite brought back, regraded, um, and seeded. Um, and then that dash red line at the on the right side there. Is just um what we've taken as a two hundred foot offset from base plan, just to show that we have, we're outside any resource areas, so we're within, you know, the the areas that we can be this far.
Great, so jumping into the building, so the lower level of the building, there is a partially open air parking, parking, there's about seventy-two cars which will park under the building. Also on the lower level is the visiting team locker room. On the right side of the plan, there is a an entry with a covered walkway, which is connecting to the existing athletic facility. And then the main circulation to get up and down the buildings in that lower southeast corner of the plan. Going upstairs, so on that entry area coming up from the basement, there is a two-tier lobby. And that's just to connect to the existing level of the field to go to level one. Within level one, there is the main court area, which you saw in the previous rendering, there's the two basketball courts, the turf court. And then there's also a separate fitness center, and one of the main purposes for the fitness center and the building is to allow, you know, not just the athletes, but you know, the whole population of the school to be involved. In athletics, that's one of the key things that the new athletic director is pushing forward. And there's also the services, the bathrooms, there's some meeting rooms on this level. And and the mechanical rooms. And then going upstairs, there is the track, there's one full turn, the other turns are more convenience turns, you can't really sprint around them, and then there's some fitness equipment and fitness areas on on level two. Okay, and then this page is showing the the elevation, so part of our special plan is the request for exceeding the building height for zoning, so this is. On the top is showing the exist, or it's showing the new field house on the right, and it's also showing the existing athletic facilities, including the the chapel in the distance and. Just to really show the relationship of our building to some of the buildings on campus, that is not quite. That is kind of in the middle, there's some building on campus taller, there's some buildings on campus that are that are shorter than this building. And at the end, at the end of this presentation, we also have some views from Lowell to show kind of what it looks like now, and then with the building plopped in as a rendering. And we made sure to that these photos are in winter, so there are no leaves on these trees, but of course, right now, it's completely green wall, so then some are not gonna see anything, so. From the north of Lowell, this is kind of the existing view, and with the field house plopped in, you can see that a lot of it is sheltered by the existing structures on the site. Rotating around, looking almost exactly west, there's the two new houses that were built last summer, adding the field house in, you can see that once you're on Lowell, there is quite. Just because of the the angle of the view, there is, the houses do block a lot of the view to the field house. And then from the south, again, adding the field house and. Of course, during winter, you do have more views into the campus, during during the summer, it's really gonna be, gonna be blocked, but it's just showing that the. The configuration of the building, even though it is close to Lowell, the impact of the height isn't as much as you would think, based on the height of. Okay, really flew through there, so we have time for questions, but that's the, that is the end of the presentation, so.
Can I ask a question? I'm I'm very familiar with your current field house in the hockey rink. This building is going to the south of it and is connected with a walkway, is that what I heard you say?
It is going to the west, oh, there we go. So that existing hockey rink is kind of here at the top of the page, and this building is gonna be to the west of that, and that that gravel lot, that's.
Right, that you had to park it, that's that's where this is going.
That's right.
Okay, but you're keeping the existing hockey rink and the existing basketball court?
That's right, all the existing athletic facilities are gonna remain.
Thank you.
That's matter.
Um, what other locations did you um examine and why did you reject them and why was this the the priority?
In the early planning phases, well, one of the, one of the things was that they wanted the new buildings to be here, the the existing facilities. Uh, there is a parking lot on the other side, on the east side of it, which isn't quite big enough for this facilities. We did look at. At one point, there's an idea of an auditorium that may have gone over there, but really, this was. Prime location because it's right next to the existing facilities, that's a empty lot at the moment, so. It may, it makes sense to not have it be closer embedded in the campus. And it's right on the bills, which is kind of all these factors that this might be the right location for it.
Okay, and um, can you talk a little bit about, you talked about drop off and just the circulation, I didn't hear anything about that, or I didn't um understand it. What they're explaining.
Okay, so. The north side here is Pratt Lane, so the main parking lot is gonna be the north side of the building, return in. The. Drop off for day students or the drop off for athletic, athletic events is this kind of this turn, which is connecting to that courtyard between the new building and the existing building on the right-hand side. So this is kind of the drop off on this side, there's still the existing drop off on the other side of the existing facilities, because there is a kind of a main entry next to kind of Atkins Cage and the hockey rink on the other side. So there's kind of two, there's multiple locations for drop off and pickup, especially during an athletic event. Yep.
Um, it and then um. I looked uh briefly, you had some calculations of the number of parking spaces and it, there's a decline. So can you um talk about? Um, what um your existing capacity is and what your general use patterns of parking are and. How you're going to manage, if necessary, um, a reduction in the number of spaces, because. I think there was a reduction of that, I don't know, thirty some or something like that.
Was there a reduction? There was, there was an add.
I thought there was an add to twenty-four, yeah.
An add of twenty-four?
There was an add of.
I'm sorry, I read it.
Thought it was a.
But it's incorporated, you gotta remember that the new space is underneath the new, the within the athletic facility itself.
I was, I was reading for the the total campus.
Yeah, I think.
Was there, okay, then I will go back and.
I thought there was two.
Okay.
So, um. Um, what will happen at this point, the application has gone out to town staff for their round review and to provide their comments. Um, the review of the stormwater drainage um and um the site circulation, um, that's going out to an outside consultant to review and provide comments back. Um, so. At that point, I'll pull this together into a report for on the planning board and the Board of Appeals. Um, part of that will also be the building commissioner will um review the parking. Analysis and confirm the parking analysis, um, which for. This is based on the number of students and um. The proposed project, they're not expanding the student population or the number of teachers. So um I believe the building commissioner has reviewed the initial parking analysis and. Did not have any issues um with their analysis, but that will be um all detailed in the report.
So I have a question kind of tangentially related to that. I think I read that the facility will primarily be used by middlesex students or middlesex use, so it will be practice facilities, things like that.
Yeah.
Um, having brought my own little guys to hockey and dealt with that circulation pattern, which, you know, is. Less than ideal, um, do you anticipate the facility being opened up at any point to outside leagues? Other, you know, general use that would increase. Traffic flow, visitors to campus, that type of thing, that we would look at this and say, yes, for current students, for current use of of community. Totally appropriate if it were to be opened to more public access, like the Learn to Escape Program, something like that, now that you have a larger facility, would that increase traffic flow and that type of thing?
So it's, so the the school has taken conservative effort to to really kind of limit the access of the facilities, just because it's, it's a burden on us, we we're short, you know, we're we're tight on staff. Um, and the liability alone. But they're willing to, obviously, if there's something within the town that they want to do a special event, then obviously a good consideration, but I I would, to answer your question. I would say I don't foresee any of that really.
Yeah, because because my concern is actually the flip side of like, if you build it, they will come, and does this create like a huge traffic issue? On Lowell Road with a big increase in a huge facility that like you think about, think about teamwork's enacted.
Right.
You know, and the traffic that that causes, is that something we should be kind of?
So they're not, they're not, they're not looking to do that.
Um, and at this point in time, um, that is a different kind of project, it has a different. Um, type of parking requirement, and it is no longer, so.
Question.
Um, you know, the the whatever decision gets written, um, that will be specific that, you know, this is not, you know, gonna, you know, general be be open to the general public.
Um, yeah.
You know, if. You know, if you, you know, if there's, you know, one of, you know, one's, you know, type of special event, I don't even know what that would be for a practice facility, because it's not, um, you know, there.
It would be travel team soccer tryouts, you know, one day of the year or something.
And I know we have such, you know, Middlesex has a good relationship with the other schools in town, Concord Academy and Feds. And I know that, you know, their A D has said, hey, we we need a court to practice. Sure, no problem. But that's, you know, we're not holding events where there's outside of the level, right?
Yeah.
That's, I understand your question. We're 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 definitely trying to mitigate that, eliminate it altogether.
Okay.
I was picturing youth basketball, like touring, like all sorts.
We obviously have children the same age and are traumatized by traveling to their soccer.
My boys and my boys in hockey all the way from juniors to college. I've I've bought and paid for four Corvettes. I never get a drive.
I I just had one, and it's really quite a minor question. I it's just confirming my own logic. For where there was impervious driveway and pervious paving on the parking spots themselves, that has to do with the strength of the actual product, right? That it can, like, travel lanes get more use, so you can't use a pervious.
Yeah, it's uh, right, as you're as you're turning your wheel and the on the driveway during weather like this, you potential to rattle or turn up that that top course. So I, this is my, now I can say it. If you go to the Concord Museum, that's exactly how we did the setup and that's how we we've done it. And it's been in use for six years or so. And it's looks like it's holding up well. Yeah, I suggest you take a look.
I've never noticed anything bad about that. So, right, probably a good sign.
Okay, I have um a couple of questions. So first of all, I noticed that you have a lovely southern exposure on one half of the field house roof. I couldn't quite tell from your image there, was that solar on the roof or was that some other?
Was, it was an it was an alternate, so the building is going to be PV ready. Um, there were some limitations from Concord, Light and Power on how much PV we can put on the roof. So they kind of pushed it into the alternate category because of.
But if it is PV ready, then yes, I.
In the future, it could happen.
Is assuming we manage to settle our um electrical issues, which we're working on. And speaking of which, oh, you could suck up some electricity, but not the immediate. You mentioned some EV parking spots. We all know how much more cost effective it is to make, to run conduit while building compared to tearing things up later. I was a little unclear. Are you running conduit every now?
Well, ten percent of the spaces.
But not to all the new spit, all all the model, are you running con- conduit to all the spaces where you will be tearing something up? Or only ten percent of them?
Only ten percent, which is about sixteen spaces. So sixteen spaces will have conduit ready to have EV. On day one, there's going to be eight to ten.
There, you're right. No, there was going to be a total of four, or two, two EV chargers. One charger does two spaces. Yeah.
Why not one conduit everywhere? I see why you wouldn't put in more chargers until you see a need for it, but why not the conduit?
We are doing the conduit to sixteen of the.
But not to all of?
Not all of them. There's like a hundred and something spaces.
Uh, well, that's a little disappointing, but okay. Um, so as part of the permit for the two duplexes, um, there's supposed to be an EV charger.
We're replacing those. The ones that we're removing, we're replacing those. Each of the duplexes are going to have two bases to have charges. Sorry.
Two, two duals.
That's right. One for each.
Okay.
Exactly. Sorry.
Well, I remember this conversation for when you were getting your faculty housing built about conduit everywhere, please. But I was not yet on the board. The spaces for the duplexes are going to be paral- are going to be parallel in the front, is that?
Of course, they are. So if I go through landscape planner, on the left-hand side, these, there's four parallel.
Okay. Yep.
And then there's going to be, I think the other duplex is taking two here. So this north side is where there's going to be the EV ready spaces. So all these will have the sixteen of these will have the conduit. In addition to the faculty one on the end, this main parking area, we aren't running conduit to those at the moment.
And you're not putting any conduit in the podium parking under the building?
That's right. Fire department had a real issue. They're very happy that we weren't going to put EV.
Oh, interesting. Well, I can't.
Okay, are there any other board questions or?
I'll ask it because it's going to come up at some point. Um, you have artificial turf in the building?
Inside, yes.
And do you have any special air handling or other um things that will offset any issues that people might have with artificial turf?
Are you talking about VOCs or off gassing of the of the turf?
Um, the people are going to raise, uh, they're going to ask the questions comes up every time there's our first term proposed is that it's it's just killing our kids with cancer is the line you're going to get. Um, and that there are there, there are, there are legitimate concerns about, yeah, ball compounds, off gassing, that type of thing. And if there's, you know, she's right to raise the question because we're not going to be the only people that are going to ask you that question.
Have to do some.
Which I'm 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 going to at least caution the board, that's not within your purview.
Absolutely.
Your jurisdiction.
Good.
Um, it is also not within the purview of the jurisdiction of the Board of Appeals as part of the special permit.
That's good to know.
It's not, it's a, it's not a normal outdoors. It's an interior, it's an interior spec. It doesn't, it's not the artificial turf you envision in the outdoors.
We won't be the only people that ask you that at some point. So as you move through this process.
Though we should have that spec at the ready.
Yeah, that's just helpful.
To answer that.
A a quick statement about it to add to the application would not be. Be good, or just don't call it artificial turf.
So does uh, there any other uh questions from the board or comments?
What's the timeline on this?
September, we're looking to try to kind of get through the appeals and get the permit approved by the end of August. And the first, first of September, and we're probably going to have eighteen months over for average junior. Very excited about it.
Yeah, it's a great project.
To go back to your comment, if we if we build it, they will come, right? Well, the schools, we are co-curricular. We're great on the academics, but we are getting ourselves handed to athletic side. So we want to build this to kind of bring that uh that that higher compete student athlete, we will be better amongst the peers.
Awesome. And I'll I'll turn it over then to public comments. Uh, we have one online on Pamela Drift.
Hi, Pamela Drift thirteen Concord Green. I want to echo what has already been said. Um, please uh consider that uh artificial turf is full of PFAS. For instance, the uh recently uncovered terrible stuff that keeps the grass blades from sticking together. Um, and uh pollutes the water supply as well as the kids. And also I think we need to have a prob, we need to have a discussion with our fire chief. He is holding back the adoption of electrification by unreasonable restrictions on batteries inside buildings where we have combustion engine cars and generators and so on. So uh, I I know that has nothing to do with this particular thing, but I encourage you to run conduit, even if it stays empty. In ten years, the majority of cars are going to be electric. Thank you.
Yeah, and um, the next comment we have is from um Carol Savor.
Yeah, hi, this Carol Savoy sixty-one Bell Knapp Street. Uh, are these comments related to this particular subject? Or are they related just things that are not on the agenda?
This this particular one, we'll open it up to the public, broader public comments later.
Okay, mine was a broader public comment, so I'm fine with this item. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, and with that, um, oh.
My name is Michael Mcateer, and I live sixteen fifteen Lowell, directly across the street from where this is going going to be. And a few questions. One is, it was difficult to tell from your elevation sketch um, how the impact of the height as relates to um shadowing and the sun. It faces east, right?
Right.
So we live right across the street from that, and and there are a few other people that live right in there too. So how that plays out would be helpful, particularly, I think it's six hundred, sixty feet or seventy feet, so six stories. And how does that relate to the existing gymnasium, the height of the existing gymnasium? Is this significantly higher than that? It's a few feet higher than that. There's a few feet higher.
So we'll see this is a better closer view.
So you need to direct your com- your questions and comments to the board. So Lonnie, if you bring something up, sorry.
I can, should I share again?
Yeah, if there's an image you want to uh share, then it'd be perfect to do it on the screen.
Yeah, I will just post that. So at the top of the screen there. The existing gym is here. We're a smidgen higher than the existing gym.
And are you comparing the height or the elevation there?
The height of the to the the very top of the ridge.
Okay, are the two at comparable height at ground level?
This isn't.
If one of them is on a hill, then the building heights don't make as much difference about the.
There, our lower level is roughly the same level as the the ground level of the existing gym. So that's where the connection is. So this is, this is showing with the actual topography of the site, how they both sit on the site.
Got it.
The faculty housing is is appropriate height that we have found. When I think of the faculty housing, if you were to look at that elevation, right, with clarity, would you see the the faculty housing and then you would see this massive uh field house behind it? Or would you see probably not much different than what the gymnasium footprint gives?
Well, that 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 the fact that in the wintertime, where their access is, the sun is not directly higher, it's lower. So you probably won't see that cast of that gym exceeding the faculty housing.
Yeah.
So it's good. It's a gable too. It's a gable too, helps. It's low, low surface area.
So Lonnie, can I ask? I think you're standing in his driveway, correct?
This one is sixteen twenty-nine. You said you're sixteen fifteen? Sixteen fifteen, yeah. This is very. But this is, this is showing, so it's pretty much the second part that you said, that you barely see the, especially since you're pretty close, and you barely see the top of the field house. And you may see it in between the the houses that are there, but it's not going to be something towering over it, especially from your address.
Okay, and then the larger question, and I don't know if you help me out, the board, please, if it's outside the scope of today. But this is a very large project and it's a very welcome project. And we've been friends with Middlesex and we we love them, right? And they've been very responsive in trying to do sustainability, right? They have one of the best with the Rachel Carson School, um, a um geothermal system. Is the plan to think about geothermal for this and net zero? And dark skies compliant, you know, outside and also um paying attention to that exterior lighting design? Because I know where it is right now, part of the campus is perfect for exterior lighting. The part with the gymnasium is there are a lot of, in the lingo, glare bombs and using the wrong fixtures and not being, you know, high cutoff fixtures, right? And not, not that anybody intended that. It's just that is not, there's a lot of other things you're dealing with. So thinking about that light, that exterior lighting design from that standpoint, we just had a discussion earlier about high Calvin and um and and white light, which is disturbing. It is disturbing. And if you look at the um, the bank at night, you'll go down there and you'll see that there are glare everywhere. And it's just what, it's one, it's wasting energy. Secondly, it's not aesthetically pleasing. So I just want to be sure that you're paying a lot of attention to that.
I questioned, yes, six geothermal wells for this facility. This is all electric, no gas.
Right, no fossil fuels.
It's it's probably one of the better geothermal designs that I think we've put out since we built Rachel Castle.
You should be commended for that.
You should have mentioned the geothermal in your presentation, the I suggest, because you said all of them.
Covered a lot of ground.
Yeah, that's like one of the, that's a, that's a really big deal.
But you're not just taking more electricity from the town. You're actually um reducing the amount of electricity that you need to use it all, which is a nice point.
In this area is perfect.
Okay, let's get down to school and turn the geothermal for the town.
But they're they're standing column wells.
Yeah.
So any statement of board hold down to the granite, pilot VD, six of those. Water out, water back, clean, just at a slightly higher temperature.
Uh, did you say closed loop? Is that what you meant by water out?
The six geothermal wells, there's three stages of the loops. There's, that's the first loop, that's the open loop.
Okay.
It goes to the heat, plate and frame heat exchanges, goes to those heat exchanges, right back to the well stack. And the internal mechanical room is all pumps that are fed and operate by domestic water. And then the refrigerant system's out, the entire building now is, we're pumping less water, so it's more efficient. And that's refrigerant base system.
Hmm.
So even more efficient.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not using the electricity that one would have running bigger pumps.
Right.
So why, why do you still need a generator? Didn't you say you're putting in a generator?
That's just for emergency use.
It's it's a, it's a, yeah, this, we're not considering this a lifeboat facility. We're only looking to just back up the um, uh, the low ceiling areas where there would be occupancy and keep one heat pump off. Picture a blizzard. All those bubbles low power. I mean, yeah, I think the generator would simply, it's exactly that extreme conditions.
Okay.
Is it looking to meet a net zero uh standard? Are you headed in that direction?
Not with this. I think if we had been able to use PV, it was something we could have talked about, but not, not.
You mentioned you were looking at LEED certification, but you didn't mention what level silver?
My last question is um, a suggestion maybe of doing, I I hear your point about the municipal light plant and the difficulty with the distribution and solar, et cetera. So maybe go back and think of that a little more clearly and maybe have a design charrette with CMLP? Because we are moving in that direction. And CMLP is trying to transform as well with the congestion around distribution, where the solar um uh sightings are. I mean, we're in, we're in a transformation now. And with a building of this size and the potential to examine, you know, maximizing the principles around solar and um leading the town to its goals on emission reductions and CMLP's goals to be entirely clean. It's a golden opportunity to go back and i- i- it's not to suggest that it's not difficult or the issues are um closed, that they could be open if we, if we spend that time in a charrette with them. And think about, what would you do if you stepped back and said, what's the potential for this? And you may conclude because of technical issues, financial issues, operational issues, that you've achieved the best opportunity. But you also might find that this could be the example of how we can do other buildings going forward. You've already shown that with the geothermal, and that is a huge step forward. Because we're beginning to take that experience and adopting it in other places. In terms of even, you may have heard about First Parish and looking at district geothermal. That's the direction we're going in. And we're at this moment in time where Middlesex has that same capability to to elevate the disaster in the end there. So that's all I will say, you know, about that. But I would advise the board to, you know, think about that carefully about what that opportunity could look like.
Well, it looks like the roof will be solar ready and our our temporary problem in the town is with MCI Concord shutting down. We're not using it. Concord shutting down, we're not using enough electricity, but this is a temporary problem. As more homes around town, I hope, shift the heat pumps and municipal buildings and commercial buildings to heat pumps. That will use up more electricity as people get more electricity, electric cars. And eventually, as MCI Concord actually reaches some point of redevelopment and sucking down more electricity. Then I imagine you will be leaving to put solar panels on your roof, but. It doesn't entirely make sense to design them when they can't connect them because. In three years, there'll be better solar panels and you'll design it. I mean, I assume.
Exactly.
You'll design it then when the town is actually able to accommodate the influx. I'm not speaking as professional here, it's just that's how it seems to me. Since you are making it solar ready.
That's right.
Yeah.
You have to like go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, solar ready is sort of the bottom line baseline. You wouldn't ever go below that. What I'm suggesting. Is that we look at the opportunity as we electrify the economy, as we electrify where we're going. And where CMLP is now in their future direction of growth. Is there an opportunity to build around that? You know, we'll probably sit here three years, five years from now and say, um, doing things very different than we're doing it right now. Because we're at, we're at that cusp of change. And all I would be suggest is maybe we can anticipate. What that transformation looks like now, because you're only going to get one chance. We are making it solar ready.
I'm just gonna.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So that's all.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna bring it back a little bit from where we are today and this presentation. We, the merits of solar and and other alternative fuel sources are are obviously important, but right now we're just discussing. This particular permit in front of us and what what is proposed and what can be done. So if there's. I see there's one more public comment, but if it's about. Alternative fuels, the use of or or anything related to that, we could table that, but I'm shaking your head no. So if you would like to, go ahead, please.
Pamela Drit thirteen Concord Green. I just wanted to urge you to take at least a cursory look. At replacing the generator system with a battery system, which would completely allow you to use solar. Without worrying about the grid and would help with any kind of solar saturation issues. And your resilience in emergencies. That's being done all over the country.
Thank you. Um, and with that, um, we will um, move the discussion to, or continue this discussion? Is that how this works or is this?
Since this is not a public hearing, this is just the board making a recommendation. You can just decide when you would like to. As a courtesy, have this come up on the agenda again. I can tell you.
I'm saying town staff.
It it's, you know, town staff and the outside consultant, they'll. Um, review it, provide their comments. Usually, you know, it goes back to the applicant for them to review. So, you know, um, you know, we're, we're looking. The earliest, and that may not even be time enough, would be a month, you know, on July sixteenth. Um, we, you know, I would probably suggest the board put it on the sixteenth and then, you know, we can work with the applicant where things are in the process. If it needs to be moved off. Um, another, you know, two weeks after that, we can assess that at the time, since this isn't a public hearing. Um, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, set for a time certain. A public hearing, you have to continue it to a date and time certain. And that'll be for the Board of Appeals. So we don't need to.
We don't need to take any action right now, but we've definitely scheduled it for. For July sixteenth to bring it back and have further discussions.
Yes, we'd like to be, we'd like to come back on the sixteen.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Um, and with that, those are our two specific agenda items. And now we'll move on to administrative business, uh, which includes public comment. Um, generally, public comment is limited to fifteen minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to anyone speaker. Um, these general public comments are limited to items which are not on the agenda. Uh, I will also note with regard to public comments, um, the planning director did receive an email from the public, which was distributed to. The, um, the rest of the board earlier today, so that that has been distributed and taken under advisement. Uh, with that, I will open it up to any public comment in the room. There is any? I don't see much public in the room, so, um, we will go to online. And I see Carol Savoy, has your hand raised?
Hi, Carol Savoy, sixty one Belknap Street. Um, I have a question in regards to the planning board. Has the planning board decided to move forward with a combined business? As a potential warrant for the twenty twenty five town meeting?
To my knowledge, no, I mean, no, we we have, a- as a general goal right now, that is one of the items we have identified, but there is no. Nothing that firm to say that we have or have not gone. Made a decision on that firmly one way or the other, in all honesty.
So currently, um, the board has. The consultant who's assisting the board with the MBTA Communities Site Plan Rules and regs. Um, is going to put together a scope of work for the board's next meeting to review. Um, to have assistance with looking at potential amendments. Um, that could be done for the combined business residents. Generally, the process for zoning bylaw amendments is between now and, I'm gonna say, October. Um, the board does all of their research, um. And and work into looking at the different potential bylaw amendments. Um, and then get to a point of having a conversation on which ones they feel they are ready to. Move forward with, which ones they feel need more work or, you know, it's. Or doesn't work. And then that conversation usually happens sometime in October.
Okay, yeah, I, and I, I did understand that you had forwarded my email in regards to the four large projects, the. MBTA zoning that we just passed and the, you know, MCI prison and the two twenty nine Main Street. And now add to the list, the Welch's property. There just seems to be, you know, four very large pieces of property in town that could be potential housing sites and it. And I was wondering, you know, are those four sites a part of the planning board's goals? For the year to do something with or look at or proactively get ahead of? Where where does that, I guess, stand in your list of priorities, those those four topics?
So I can, I can give you, um, so, um. Welch's is only occupies a portion of three hundred Baker Ave. So they, they only occupy a portion of that existing building. So they're relocating their headquarters. So a portion of that building. Will be vacant for another business use. So I I don't know, I don't understand your statement about a property. There is no property. They occupy a portion of three hundred Baker Ave, the existing building. Um, as a tenant. Um, the. MCI conquered, uh, the MCI conquered Advisory Board has been formed. Um, they have started to meet every other Monday. Um, and. As far as the um, process for that, um, it will be. Um, a minimum of a year to five years figuring out. Um, what's going to happen with that property and anything? If anything that happens there will require zoning bylaw amendment for a town meeting. Um, but at this point in time, what's going to happen there is, um. You know, that we're, we're years out. On on figuring that out. Um, and I believe for twenty two twenty nine Main Street. I think we're a decade out before something gets built there. So. What I do know is that both the planning board and the West Concord Advisory Committee, when they had their joint meeting, um, discuss. Um, updating the West Concord Master Plan. Um, and that. It is a conversation, I believe the Select Board is also having. It will be finding the funds to do that update while MCI conquered. Advisory Board is um, advancing on that aspect, so. You know, there's. I, I, we're, we're a couple, we're a couple of years away from understanding what's. Um, that may, may happen or what the potential could be.
And there are no other public comments. We will move on to the next administrative item, which is. Uh, potential twenty twenty five ATM zoning bylaw amendments, so, um. One thing. In our goals memo was that there are several items which. Which are zoning bylaw amendments that we would look to do that are more administrative in nature. And part of being efficient about this and not having eleven PM meetings anymore, or trying not to. If we can avoid it, is to start those discussions very early so that we can. Have them as appropriate and and line them, tee them up. Where they are not generally part of a broader discussion within town. Um, and first one, I guess I could turn over, Elizabeth, to discuss what what we thought the first one would be, but it it looks to be amendments. Related to the additional dwelling units by law. Um, my understanding is, is the zoning Board of Appeals has come up with. A a nice little list, and it was in our memo as well, of of different issues that have arisen. When the boots hit the ground and and how we can seek to address some of those discrepancies. Yep.
Correct. So the um, first one, um, for conversation tonight is specifically dealing with the. Um, maximum square footage by right of seven hundred and fifty square feet and by special permit, up to a thousand square feet. And clarifying in the zoning bylaw whether that does or does not include. Um, the basement. And so I'm just going on, when the planning board moved forward to discuss this in twenty nineteen for the bylaw amendment. That happened in twenty twenty. And it's. Um, my opinion, um, that these are supposed to be. Accessory to, and and this is a different topic, changing it from additional dwelling unit to accessory dwelling unit. Um, that, um, it was the intent that it was gross floor area, which. Um, under the definition in the zoning bylaw under section one point three point twelve does include the basement. And that was, I think, a specific conversation that the planning board had at that time.
Does gross floor area also include, um, porches and things like that? Or does it not?
The, the definition is exterior wall to exterior wall for any space with a ceiling height of six eight.
Okay, so it would not include porches or decks. But it would include, uh, and that's. Garage space. Oh, habitable, so not garage space, okay. And not unfinished basement or no, that's.
That's the question.
No, it's, um, so it's, um, so it wouldn't include.
All the walls.
Like an opened porch or, um, you know, a, a screened in porch. But I think that's where, you know, in that definition, you know, it can be more specific.
Hmm. So if I build a house with a six foot seven basement.
Um, that does not get added to the gross floor area.
And people have been playing some games with that. Maybe not with basements, but in various places.
Yeah, yes, it's happening, so.
Because it's technically not habitable space. For something to be habitable under the building code, I believe.
And I'm sure, and it's happening.
I'm not saying it's not happening, but I believe so, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, we go through this change and it's a very easy, it's very easy to get around. So I'm just. I'm just saying, how do we do? What we want to do, which is, you know, not, not make this a two thousand square foot. Extra home that's built. Uh, and because it doesn't have a wall next, it's like, you know, allowed duplexes, but. Yeah.
Um, so, you know, in my agenda memo came up with something, you know. You know, really quick, but it, it, and and this is just to start the conversation with the board. Um, you know, if it is the, you know, the, you know, beliefs that. What the board intended and what town meeting, you know, uh, you know, voted on was, you know, seven hundred and fifty square feet. If, that's it, you know, whether it's a basement of six, seven or, um, or. You know, if, if that is the direction that the board, you know, wants to. Go towards, then I would probably have a conversation with the building commissioner and come up with. Um, something he feels is. In enforceable, not just under zoning, but, you know, under the building code as well. And it, and and it may be. Um, something slightly different, you know. Seven hundred and fifty square feet. Total, all, all areas of the, you know, of the structure, I I don't know. Um, so that's a conversation I can have with him and get clarity. The other, you know, the other question. With your comment, Linda, is. Um, you know, how do you deal with garages? You know, if, is the seven hundred and fifty square feet. Um, you know, excluding a garage. Excluding a one car garage. There's, there's a few existing, you know, detached three car garages. You know, where they went through and it had habitable space on the second floor, it was nine hundred and fifty square feet. And went and got a special permit from the Board of Appeals. Um, and, you know, the garage was not included. And how the building commissioner has been looking at that is. If it's a detached structure and it's a garage. And that accessory, you know, dwelling. Has direct access into the whole garage and it's hundreds and hundreds of feet from the house. And that, that's part of that accessory dwelling unit, but is, you know, is that the in? Is that the intent? Is that something the board also wants to talk about?
We'd be kind of inclined to say, do include the garage, but let people go through the special permit process to make an argument. For allowing it to be built despite the area being larger due to it being garage space, because then. There is the opportunity to try to decide, we'll have, does that garage really belong to the main house or really belong to the ADU? Or is it split or, um, would they, you know, uh, not park the cars in it and just use it to? Expand their living space.
You can't, you can't govern, you know, illegal conversions.
You really can't.
So I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to try and fix that.
Calling the garage space, by saying the garage space counts. Then, um, it really.
Well, so I think, I think, you know, the, you know, the board has to focus on. The, the purpose of having, you know, an additional dwelling unit is to have a small dwelling unit. You can have a seven hundred and fifty square foot dwelling unit. Um, you know, if somebody wants to have a one car garage. Um, you know, it. I would, I would, I would love to have a garage. I don't have a garage. Um, you know, if you have, I don't, I don't, I think you have to think of the purpose of having an ADU and is allowing a garage that's. Seven hundred and fifty square feet of living space. You know, I, I would love to have to only clean seven hundred and fifty square feet. But, um, you know, it's not, it is not a, a lot of square footage.
It's not.
Um, so I think including.
The garage.
The garage in seven hundred and fifty by right or a thousand by special permit. Um, I, I don't see where that. Is really a positive thing for the purpose of allowing an ADU, but. Um, because you can envision, like, you know, you have a house and you have a garage and then you say, you know, okay, I'm going to move my mother-in-law in. And what we're going to do is we're going to build something on top of the garage. We don't have space to build another one. We can plop it on top and she gets, you know, this much square footage. I can see that excluding the garage being large enough, that that's.
That that's in line with kind of the spirit of how this was passed of like, can we accommodate? You know, a separate living structure that's really subservient to the main structure. But you know, still have enough size. I can see building something over a larger garage and still having it be an A D U. I have a larger trouble with this kind of like, well, we're gonna just build up and out and in and max out all that space underground and around. The over garage thing seems to be more an area that I can see it being in line with why this was passed.
Why?
Excluding the garage space.
I agree completely with that, but I'm also picturing the situation where if we exclude the garage space, then somebody says, okay, we've got a house, we've got a two car garage. Now we're going to take this other space on the property and we'll put gonna put another two car garage on it with an A D U on top of that and that is not what I would say this was envisioned for, and maybe I don't have.
There are limit of the number of A D Us you can have.
Well, but there would only be one, because you had your old garage with no A D U and it would just stay your garage. And then you'd put in this whole new garage with an A D U on top of it, and now there would be.
All you've really accomplished then is having, you know, five car garage. You still only have one A D U.
Well, that is true, yes, um but it would be using. It would mean that the A D U by law was not only providing housing, but also proliferating garaging space.
But if somebody wanted a garage, they would just build a garage anyway, but they couldn't build an A D U. That's the you know, if you wanted five car garage, you had the space for it, you could keep going. But you couldn't possibly put your mother in law on the property.
Right.
So.
Well, that's.
Couldn't you have both? I I mean, like, you're not gonna stop some, I've seen houses that have garages out the wazoo, because people love cars and it's just, that's what they wanna do, and I get that. Um to a degree, but um like, my neighbor built a detached garage because they wanted somewhere to work on a car. And if they wanted to put up A D U on top of it, they wouldn't legally be allowed to, the thing's not gonna be any shorter than they built. I mean, they built a big thing, and that's because, you know, once you put a lift in and stuff.
People build detached garages because they can't build a connected garage because it would go over far, is that right?
Um no, the floor area ratio includes any detached structure, so it doesn't matter whether it's attached or detached.
Okay.
Sometimes in H D C you can't attach.
And sometimes you wanna throw your husband in a detached garage.
For your mother in law.
Yeah, I can think of a recent house with a slightly detached garage and I can't figure out why, but different from. Well, it's enough that you have to go out in the freezing cold to get your gigantic home office, and that was what they chose, so there you are.
Is that what they chose, or that's what?
Well, it's what the built was built, and I don't know if they chose the.
No, there's no requirement that somebody, you know, it it so it it more than likely somebody chooses to do a detached garage. Um cause of the setback requirements. So if the if the garage is behind the rearmost portion of the dwelling, you can, and it and it doesn't have an A D U on the second floor.
Okay.
You can, it the garage can be five feet from the property line.
It has to be fifteen feet.
Correct. Um you can, you can apply for a special permit to, you know, allow for a reduction, which some people have. They had a garage and wanna put an A D U on the second floor and it's an existing garage, so they went through a special permit. Um no exterior changes are being made and, you know, the board has issued
Okay.
You know, the special permit, the directive butter is in support of the project. So that's primarily the reason why people do detached.
Okay. Okay.
Because if it's attached, then it has to meet the setback requirements.
Okay. And so the the construct is that you don't want somebody's house five feet away from you, cause that's intrusive, but if it's garage, it's just like not personal space.
Right, somebody's not, you know, in and out, living there and.
Okay.
If it's a garage with a.
So I I understand, you know, as far as um um a again, it it goes back to the the purpose of having additional dwelling units and having smaller areas for people to rent or put family. Um you know, whether somebody wants to, you know, have another garage space or not, I I think um and proliferating, you know, the use of automobiles. Um well, that's has merit. Um I that I that's um you know, you can't, you can't zone and regulate for everything, there's competing things, so. So at this point, what I probably um suggest, cause it sounds like there seems to be consensus that the board is no, it's it's seven hundred and fifty square feet and it's up to a thousand. Um whether, you know, the board can um you know, ex- you know, excluding you could, I don't even know what a standard one car conditions or even a two car garage.
Twenty four by twenty four.
Is a standard two car garage.
That's that's a large one, some of them are only twenty by twenty.
And I think the current two car garage is recommended at like forty by sixty for the, cause all of our S U Vs are so big.
For your two Hummers?
Yeah.
So.
You can see my car in the parking lot, it's not gonna fit a small garage.
So that, yeah, that the, you know, could be seven under fifty excluding a certain square footage for you know, a garage. So um let me, I'll go back and have the conversation with the building inspector, um building commissioner um about um the calculating square footage and as it relates to the current definition of gross floor area, which has the exclusion.
Question very much different, that it seems like it's a very different thing.
Um it 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 is. Um I can tell you that the applications that the Board of Appeals has um you know, it was a um like um nine hundred square foot first floor um the then the attic space. But it's only, you know, it's only the interior that's makes it to a six eight height. But, you know, as Linda said, it's like, okay, it's six eight here, it's but, you know. Get over here and there's a little dormer window and and then they measure, the architect measures out that little space of six eight. Um and then it was a complete full, full basement.
So people are exploiting the lack of clarity to get around the size limitation.
Um.
Is is the is is what we've seen in practice.
They're they're
Well, yeah, they're they're using you using the definition as it's.
They're, yeah, they're taking the the, yeah, kind of lack of.
Yeah, but I don't, I guess what I don't understand is a basement. It's below ground, it's not adding, it's not changing the.
The visual.
That's why, so that's why, you know, there's there's two different conversations. One, we're just talking about additional dwelling units. Um accessory to, you know, the the single family dwelling, small structures for people to rent. That's a square footage conversation. Scale and massing, that's where you get into the maximum floor area ratio. Um that that's different, that's dealing with what it looks like above the ground, the mass of the structure. And that's why when you do the calculation for the maximum floor area ratio, it excludes the basement. On on purpose, and that's why. So you're you're talking about um two different two different aspects. You're talking about a small accessory, additional dwelling unit um and its square footage to have these smaller units to to rent and um to, you know, um help with, you know, having a variety of types of housing. Um so it's not another two thousand square foot additional dwelling unit. It really is only seven hundred and fifty square feet or a thousand square feet. That's different than massing and and scale, and that's where the maximum floor area ratio um is supposed to.
And do you think part of that, and I think this might be addressed getting to your, cause I see what you're saying, so it's like, why does it matter, it was basement? If the if the intent behind passing an A D U was to increase the variety of housing and also smaller housing, the rent on a twenty four hundred square foot house that has a giant basement versus the rent on a seven hundred and fifty square foot unit are gonna be astronomically different. So you could rent that house, that little A D U with the giant basement to a family and they're gonna pay I'm making numbers up, five thousand a month. A seven hundred and fifty square foot unit is gonna be available to rent for twenty one hundred. It it it's more about what housing stock becomes available by what's being built. And the larger it is, the higher price the less it's available to. I'm I'm imagining a town meeting, it was, you know, we want this available for, you know, seniors to age of place, you wanna do that kind of right, so I think that's the.
Absolutely get that.
Does it really matter?
Well, no, I get that if 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 it's really gonna make that much of a difference for what somebody can rent that property for. Um there's a lot of utility in having a basement for even, you know, a mother in law who wants to be able to store some of those trophies they save from those kids. Soccer games, um but.
And is there a difference between finished and unfinished? No, there's not.
Yeah. Yeah, if it's finished and you you're you're making a bonus room in the basement, that's a different thing than if you.
So that's, you know, I could have that conversation with the building.
That's a question, whether it's like if it's a utility room and it, you know, it's it's just an unfinished basement versus, as you said, it's a movie theater.
Yeah, right, right.
But and does an accessory dwelling unit have to have? Um it it can't be um have any common wall or So then um how do you separate a a large A D U from a duplex?
You can't have an A D U in a duplex.
No, how do how do you tell if something is an A D U or duplex?
When the architect brings the drawings of an A D U that's bearing a wall that's got um a basement of a thousand square feet and seven hundred and fifty feet. So you you know, from um that's adjacent to a uh eighteen hundred square foot um primary house. I mean, that's that's a duplex, right?
Well, if we. Then it would have to call it a duplex, because it would be too big or.
So a a duplex is 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 a two family. They can be legally sold separately. Um and an A D U cannot.
And 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 the the other one, the duplex requires a special permit, right? Versus an A D U's by right. So that's.
So I could build it and then hope that someday the rules would change and I could sell it to someone.
Um so currently, you know, um in residency or residence B, somebody could have had a single family dwelling with an A D U, and so now they can go through a special permit to actually, you know, change it into a two family.
Yeah, okay.
Um but uh you know, the difference between a a single family dwelling with an A D U is they can't legally be separated or sold. So for a duplex, which is a two family, those can be, um you can do a condo and divide them and sell them separately, and that that's that is the a difference.
If an A D U has a common wall, why is that different than just an addition?
Um so for it to be an A D U, um it has, it's, you know, it is separate from the.
It has a separate address.
Um it has a separate address, it has a separate um entrance. Um can you?
And it must be habitable with a kitchen and such. Yeah. I mean, you could put in a whole separate, uh you could have something that has a separate kitchen and not call it an A D U.
Addition and it ha- it has ac- access, you know, it's an addition to the house and somebody says well, you know, I get up in the middle of the night and don't wanna walk that far for a snack, and there's a lot of homes in Concord that have two kitchens.
Right.
Um but that doesn't make it an A D U, so at the minute it's separate off. Um there's no connection between the two. Um.
And that's, that should be no connection between the two?
Correct.
If there's no connection, does that convert it to an A D U if one of these houses with two kitchens closes a door and nails it shut?
Uh I I don't know.
I think going back to the building commissioner and talking about a way to, yes, to to close the loop on that, yes.
And and unfinished storage is less of a concern than
But we would have to have a way to distinguish.
But that is, that is a question.
Semi-finished basements and it could be hard for the building commissioner, but we will let the building commissioner say.
I mean, I remember when we finished our basement, it was a whole thing, because well, you need a secondary meeting.
He said there was a memo to put down restriction. The zoning Board of Appeals. Yeah, I see that.
No. Um so previously, um when the board was talking about their goals memo, um it wasn't a memo from the Board of Appeals, it was the memos um opinion letters from applicant's attorney and town council's attorney.
Also, when you talk with the building inspector, I mean, really, we want to support A D Us.
Yes.
We want to support uh variety of housing, um including especially s- small housing. And um so that this does not become so onerous, that you know, people will look and throw up their hands and say, I don't know if what I wanna do or how I wanna do it, but I don't I'm not gonna get it right or.
No, we wanna, we wanna fine tune what we have to meet the spirit of what was passed.
Yeah.
And what and what we want now after several years of seeing what's going on, yeah, not just be trapped.
Yes.
That's usually how it works. It's an hour stark enough, we can go look at the bank. You have two more.
If you look at Middlesex next to Bank of America, Middlesex is like lit up like the Christmas trees.
There are banks. Do get it.
Yeah. Okay.
Um the next is uh um Planning Board Liaison Town Planner Updates. So I will open the floor to anybody who has an update that they would like to share or not.
Um I'm trying to think of all the things that are going on.
You learn things at the Housing Institute.
Um we did learn things at the Housing Institute. Um Linda and I went last week for both days. And then Sue joined us on the second day. Um I learned there are so many really cool things that we could do, I just don't have enough time to do them right now. Uh but, um but, yeah, I know, they're really exciting. Um there actually are a couple of, um we went to an A D U um talk, a very interesting. Um Concord was featured as one of the communities where it was can be very challenging to do an A D U, not so much from the zoning by law side. Um uh but from uh the permitting side, um and um water and sewer. And um so I I actually have a bunch of notes to follow up on on that one, but.
In your copious free time.
Yeah, that's fine. Um I, you know, move, we're chugging along on, you know, trying to fill both the empty staff positions, so. Um hopefully that can be resolved soon, but um some other things um. Everything's going on. I have to start making the list before I can.
You can always see those.
Yes, you can, yeah.
Yeah, but I will, whatever, I will do this, um I will, I'll send up, I'll send out an update um for your next meeting.
And uh last agenda item we have is the uh Planning Board Meeting Minutes. Uh March twelfth and that that's actually accurate.
You did, you said something closed for Hanscom on June sixth. Was that the correct date?
It is, but it hasn't been.
As long as it's what you said, it can go in the minutes. And if they change the date out from under you, it can still go in the minutes according to what it was at the time.
What do you mean? I don't understand. So it's the environmental study project, okay, that they have to get turned in. Okay, it was supposed to have been turned in on June sixth, but we haven't seen it yet. Okay, so until we see it and all the comments about it, it doesn't mean a whole lot.
But the meeting minutes are accurate. So I make a motion that we approve the minutes for March twelfth and June fourth as.
Your questions is.
Is this for the.
How are those accurate dates?
It is what um Mark said on the recording.
No, 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 it's just.
No, 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 March, March twelfth and June.
There there are two minute.
Oh, yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for March twelfth and June fourth as um submitted and edited.
Second.
And all those in paper?
And I was, I'll just abstain because I wasn't at the march. You're allowed to vote, whether you were there or not, but you don't have to. You guys all know what you're doing.
And so with that, we will um end the meeting.
I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Sri Tukul, I'm from the uh finance committee as a liaison, so I'm just, I'm sitting here listening, so this is my first meeting, thank you.
Do you have any questions for the board?
Uh, many, but.
Well, you have more than one, you can send me an email.
Yeah, no, I don't have any, I just, this is my first, we're just taking it and observing it and. And uh since we have the meeting Thursday, we actually, it follows well, so at least.
Okay.
If there's anything, there's no financial implication as far as I see, but.
Yeah.
I just wanted to sit down and observe and see what I can, you know, contribute to the finance committee using any of your. Questions or questions on the finance side, basically.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's not your head, is it?
Yeah, so I definitely.